Hello, I'm Douglas Lesamera, host of CCC Noticias. Welcome to today's roundtable of candidates who are running for Concord City Council, District 4. District 4 covers the southern portion of Concord from Monument Boulevard on the west to Cowell Road on the east and upper border of Clayton Road. Concord City Council members are responsible for proposing new city ordinance and vote on a range of issues, including housing development, business ventures, and contracts. They also help draft a city or town budget. Today's roundtable is sponsored by the Contra Costa County Election Divisions, the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley and West Contra Costa County, and Contra Costa Television, with support from the cities of Enya, Concord, and Walnut Creek. We are recording today's roundtable live at Contra Costa Television Studios in Martinez. The candidates' participants are Eddie Burson, Miles Berks, Pablo Benavente, and Matthew Dashner. Prior to start today's program, the candidates drew lots to decide their speaking order. We will begin with Eddie.
Thank you. I'm Eddie Burson. I'm the current holder of this council seat, and I've been on it for four years as the district and eight years as a at-large. What I would like to say is that this is about proven leadership, and I've been very happy that for the last many years, I have lived up to the transparency and accessibility that transparency requires. I have my meetings not so much at City Hall, but at the local Pete's Coffee at Oak Grove and Treat. I also have put out my own little cellphone, 510-812-8180, and my email, edibursan@gmail.com. We've had a lot of issues in the last four years, and I'm very proud of the results we've had. Our homelessness is down 28%. I've worked for a year on a homeless strategic plan, and we're now putting an additional $5.2 million into it. We have reduced our crime by 10%, and we've increased our efficiency by bringing in cameras and also drones and license plate readers. And we lead the county in regard to non-police response to mental crisis. And I will be talking more about all these items, and look forward to learning what you need and what you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Miles?
Hi, I'm Miles Berks, and I'm a local business owner here in Concord. Grew up here, and I live here. It's time for change, and it's time to go in the right directions. Homelessness is still on the rise, so is crime. And hopefully, we could turn actions into words, into movement, and get the job done. You can learn more all about me on www.votemiles.com.
Thank you, Miles. Pablo?
Hello, everybody. Hello Concordians. I'm Pablo Benavente, your candidate for Concord City Council, District 4. I lived in Concord for many years since I was age 13, went to Pine Hollow Middle School, Claymont Valley High School, and I've chosen to raise my family here in Concord. And one of my, we need new generation of leadership, and I have a proven track record of that. I was the co-chair of ballot initiative Measure V that helps bring $30 million annually to our city. And you're starting to see the roads getting fixed. In the past four years, we, there's been $120 million invested in our roads, whether it's Oak Grove, Treat, Monument in our district. Those are all getting fixed because of that leadership. And $2.4 million is going back to our homeless for Measure V with the whole strategic plan. And I'm going to bring that leadership as well. It may enhance our parks. I'm the commissioner for the Parks Recreation and Open Space, and I want to continue to keep those green spaces, and I want to represent you in the city council. So I hope to earn your support. Go to my webpage, pablobenavente.com to find out more, and I look forward to having discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew?
Hello, my name is Matthew Dashner. I'm running for District 4, City Council of Concord. I'm fourth generation Concord. I'm raising my kids in Concord. My brothers have raised their kids in Concord. I'm very proud to be a resident of Concord my whole life, and I think there is a real problem with the homeless, and we need a real solution in more of a permanent manner than has happened yet. And I think with the leadership and the opportunity we have, we could turn that around with permanent solutions and give people a chance to elevate themselves that are in bad situations by making more of a permanent solution. So I'm really running on the homeless issue. That's the most important thing I see for the city of Concord, to get it back on track to raising kids and being in a real positive environment.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's start talking about homeless. Homeless encampments sweeps are controversial practice for managing unhoused. Are there better approaches that you will support for Concord? Let's start with you, Miles.
Is there better approaches for homelessness?
Yeah.
There's always better approaches. There's always different tactics you could try. Mental health is a big issue, but also drugs is a big issue, which also leads to crime in our parks where we have our kids play. There's always approaches where we could work with them to find secure housing and to help them live a sustainable life, a clean, good, you know, normal citizen just like the rest of us, to keep going and make Concord go around.
Thank you. Pablo?
I think with the issue of homelessness, we, council has identified a strategic plan, and now they're looking for the resources necessary, and they're interviewing with the requests of proposals. But I think with the homeless issue, we need to take them away from being unhoused and putting a roof over their heads and making sure that they, you know, it's not just mental health that they're suffering, it's on a case-by-case basis. Some people are suffering from mental health. Some people are suffering from alcohol abuse. Some people are suffering from drug abuse, and some people are suffering just, you know, after COVID. A lot of people lost their homes. And so identifying, removing them from the streets and identifying on a case-by-case basis what their needs are to break the cycle of, hey, we took them out, but we've got to make sure they don't go back to being homeless. So I want to make sure that the city council, we work together to make sure that they don't go back to being homeless, and we find solutions for these unhoused populations that are Concordians, and we offer real solutions for them. And I look forward to working with my colleagues on that council.
Thank you. Matthew?
Well, I think Concord has plenty of land. We could designate it 10 to 20 acres possibly somewhere and build a facility that has a infrastructure where they could use, you know, get showers, use the restroom, place to eat, where stores can donate food that they're going to have to throw away otherwise, give people a shelter, and in that area too, have a facility that's, that bonks people, but also have like a camping area for people who are in cars. There's a lot of people who park in cars over off of Francette and other places in Concord, have a place where they can park their vehicle and go take a shower, get something to eat, because they may, can help them get a job. It can help them get them back and elevate themselves. But let's have a permanent solution instead of pushing them from one spot to another, because right now, we're just wasting money, pushing them from one spot on the other. I worked for Contra Costa County. I've cleaned up homeless encampments, and all you do is you destroy their life by taking everything they have and throwing it away, and then they start over a week later, and then they just accumulate, and it's a health hazard for everybody who's involved in that. So let's have a permanent solution instead of wasting money endless times, because that's what's happened since this has started.
Thank you. Eddie?
Again, this is about proven leadership. I worked for a solid year as the co-chair of our homeless strategic plan. I'm the only candidate that was ever there. Furthermore, as I told you, we had 28% of the homeless has gone down in what we're doing now. And what we've been doing has been within the legal confines and has actually been successful. We also put $5.2 million to seven different plans which we developed, I worked on, and we are seeing right now which of those plans can be activated with the support of our nonprofits and our community partners. All of this is in place, and it's something again that proves that leadership and action is what's going on. What we will do in the future, well, we have to see what comes up with the seven plans, who we can do, what we can do, and we will get it done. And I look forward to seeing further reductions in our homeless population, because it is not compassionate to allow people to be homeless. And this is something we are working on. We have, there is no silver bullet, there is no one solution, but we have seven, and let's see what goes, and then we will adjust and move forward.
Thank you. There's obviously a mental health crisis, right, in general in Contra Costa. But how Concord, how you will plan to tackle the issues with mental health?
Yeah, I think that's a very important. I think it's not just a Concord issue, it's a regional issue, and we need to make sure that we work with our colleagues in surrounding areas such as Pleasant Hill, Martinez, Contra Costa County, because it is not just a Concord issue, it's a regional issue. And I want to make sure that we are working collaboratively with our partners and other nonprofits, because the city of Concord doesn't have all the answers, but we know who has the answers, and making sure that we go, that get those recommendations and implement them to working with our community, with the nonprofits, with the county, with the state, with the federal government, wherever we can. It's crucial to making sure that we address the mental health crisis that we're having in Concord and our regional surrounding areas.
Thank you, Matthew.
Well, back to the homeless shelter I was talking about building. They should have people there to help with the counselors instead of police that run that, have it on staff 24 hours a day, people for mental health there, because most of those people are, it's a drug abuse and mental health combination for a lot of homeless folks. So have that right there, where everything's accessible at that area that would house the homeless and give people an opportunity to get cleaned up. So that definitely make a, I would think, have the mental health accessible there as a start.
Thank you. Eddie?
Again, the issue is about proven action. As a Rotarian, I sat on the Rota Care Health Board. Rota Care provides free clinical care at several places all through the city for people who are not insured. These are actual actions. I walked the monument, I volunteered at it, and we provide free medical. This is the kind of thing which Rotarians do and other issues. You have to be involved with hands-on. And furthermore, we have expanded our homeless shelter that we have in North Concord, which includes a medical wing. That, that medical wing comes from a HEAL grant that I worked on five years ago, and this is again providing medical service. On a national level, we can't approach that, but on a local level, we can work with our nonprofits and our volunteers to provide care. And this is what we are doing, and this is what I have done.
Thank you. Miles?
Thank you. Mental health, it's a hard subject to grasp when you have no full knowledge on. So I would believe getting more knowledge out to regular citizens and people to help understand and volunteer to work with people who need help. They need to understand, they need to understand who, who they're talking to. Some people, they have this assumption homelessness is just a person on the homeless park, you know, unhoused, but some people have real issues and real issues that need to be addressed by real solutions.
Thank you. Concord recently enacted a new set of tenant protections, which were unpopular with some landlords. Do you feel that the current policy is a good one, or there's still issues to be addressed? I'm going to start this one with you, Miles.
I don't think there should be rent control. I'm against rent control. I think that the market sets the tone, and that's basically where I stand on that.
No problem. Okay. Eddie?
The issue of rent stabilization and just cause evictions came up eight years ago when I brought it up at the city council. And for eight years, we have reviewed this, we have discussed it, we have gone over it again and again with both landlords, tenants, and others. In the last four years, it has escalated, and we actually got a, a set of ordinances passed. I'm the only candidate who has ever spoken at that. Furthermore, there is no golden spike for this. This is something which is very difficult, very complex, and part of the leadership concept that I introduced was that we will review the financial impacts every year, because there's a lot of fear and a lot of incorrect assumptions about what it is. And therefore, as part of leadership, you do something and you say, okay, we will review it constantly. Government is in the business of providing domestic tranquility and providing for the general welfare of the people. That's part of what our constitution says our government is all about. And with this, I look forward to honing the issue down and making sure that the unintended consequences, which we will discover, can be addressed. And that's part of what leadership is, getting involved, listening to all sides, taking the best shot you got, and then when you see how things go, making adjustments constantly and being engaged with all sides, which is what I have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Miles?
Hi. My sole purpose is to be the voice for the people. The people of Concord District 4 did not ask for the highly restrictive rent control that has been passed. Their voices have been ignored and overlooked. I will repeal it if I am elected. It's not fair for landlords, it's not fair for the rest of Concord to address, even though we have a state rental cap already. It's going to make supply and demand go really away, and it's just going to bring the economy back down. You know, at Stanford and Harvard and MIT, they've done history research, it's 75 years of data showing that rent control does more damage than good.
Thank you. Pablo?
Thank you. Then thank you for asking that question. I think it's a very important question. District 4, we are primarily home, a lot of homeowners in that district, and I think it's important to note that sometimes the rent control can really hurt a lot of the constituents, specifically people who are single-family homeowners. Right now, they're very strict on the single-family issue. But as well landlords who own multifamily homes need to make a decision whether to make a profit that year or whether to repair and do maintenance and/or deferred maintenance. And so I think it is unfair for the, some landlords, but I also, I think we need to strike the balance, because I do believe in tenant protections. I was a chair of, co-chair of Monument Impact, which helps a lot of low-income communities in our city. And so any decision made in the city council has to be made with data-driven solutions. And I think we missed the mark with looking at the data, but now that there is a database that the city council is supposed to implement, we need to make those decisions and adjust where it needs to be adjusted, because we want to strike the balance between tenants and landlords as well. It's super important.
Thank you. Concord, as you know, there's a big immigrant population, right? And it has built an immigration court in the heart of Concord. And what happened with this is that many immigrants, they feel unsafe to go to police, because they feel that it will be, the border, they will be having an issue. So my question is, what would you do with the police to make sure there's, we ensure that they feel safe, they can go to police, they can report crime? I'm going to start this one with Eddie.
Well, this has always been something that we've discussed and unpacked when 2017, when I was the vice mayor, we issued a formal statement and a policy of inclusion and of cooperation with the community, in which we're not going to cooperate with ICE, and we are going to concentrate on the needs of our people. We look at it as residents, we look at the needs of being residents, and we look at the idea that no one should ever be fearful to go to the police for any kind of protection. They're there for public safety. We have a fairly good, if not great, record of dealing with the community and trying to alleviate the fears. We've hired more police that have Spanish language and also Afghan languages, because we have a growing Afghan community. We have even invested in new technology to allow automation to, to translate the issue of Spanish language, and we have used it now at the city council to help bring things together. As for myself, I come from a multiracial, multicultural, multi-religious family, and I can appreciate the, the problems. All my grandparents came here because of problems with the established military or police in Europe and elsewhere. So this is something that's very sensitive to me and something which we have worked on and we will continue to work on.
Thank you. Miles?
There's always a war with police and people on social media. My goal is to bring the police to the communities to understand, to meet the fellow man. There are police officers that do a great job serving and protecting and, you know, making the place safe, but if we don't know them, we're not going to automatically feel safer to know how to work with them. So if we understand on a more community level, to do more community outreach and events that brings the whole community together, I feel like we could all be safe and trust one another.
Thank you. Pablo?
You know, I mentioned earlier that I was the co-chair of Monument Impact, which helps a lot of low-income, but as well refugees and immigrant communities. And I've seen firsthand the problems that people have with the police, but it's not a problem with the police. I think it's more of an educational, they're afraid. We've got to remember, these people came to this country, and it's very foreign to them, and so we have to make them comfortable. As co-chair of ballot Measure V, we also helped secure a lot of funding for our police. I led that effort, and so making the immigrant community comfortable with the police and making sure that, I'm a, and I, for the people who are hearing this for the first time, but I always say this, if you can see it, you can be it. So our police needs to look like our community, and I think, I think that is kind of the void, and there's been made some improvements in our police. But I think, you know, speaking Spanish to them or speaking, there's a increase in Arabian-speaking communities in Concord. And so hiring maybe people who speak that language and making them comfortable and building that educational avenue for our police and, because, you know, they're a big part of our budget, and they take 54% of our budget, but they're a, a department that is seven days a week, 365 days out of the year, 24/7. And of course, they're going to have the biggest budget, but because they, at the end of the day, public safety is very important for our community, and we've got to make sure that our immigrant community as well is comfortable and they start to look like our community.
Thank you. Matthew?
I think Concord PD has always done a great job of including everybody and treating people well. Like I said, raised there, they do a great job. They go to schools, they're part of the schools and high school, so they talk to kids at a young age to make them know they can go to them. I think Concord PD is doing a great job of interacting with the public of all races. I think actually, they're probably one of the best in the state. They, like I said, I've known some kids that were right on the edge at Concord High, the police being on site, helped them, got them on the right path, let them know they could talk to them. So they're, they're really doing a good job. There's always room for improvement, and I think they're headed in the right direction.
Thank you. Let's talk about supporting the small businesses. And as you know, Monument Corridor, it's an area where there's a lot of, again, small business, most of them are low-income families immigrating business. How would you support the growth of small business in Concord? Let's start with you, Miles.
Yeah, I'm a small business owner, been here for about six years with one business, and we have another business that's gone four years. By opening these businesses, Concord was growing and going in the right direction. But with this restrictive rent control, it's going to make businesses start going away. There's places like in the CVS Shopping Center off of Treat in Clayton where those buildings are getting torn down, and there's a bunch of buildings getting turned down where you don't know if any more businesses are coming through. But as local business owner, we need the support to support each other and to help, you know, get business going. With more businesses around, lessens the tax basis and then lessens the tax burdens on us.
Thank you. Pablo?
I've met with the Concord Chamber of Commerce, and I've been listening to what they've been telling me as a candidate, and I have a long history with them. And I think it's important to note that there's, even before COVID, and I think COVID exacerbated this issue of empty spaces, and so we've got to bring business back to Concord to make sure, when you think of the, the budget for the city of Concord, the biggest one is the sales tax. That's the biggest revenue the city gets, and then the second being the property taxes. And so we've got to make sure that we, as city council, have a fiduciary duty to make sure we expand that. And how do we do that? It's by bringing businesses back to Concord. We had an opportunity to bring Target, and I think the city of Concord, the council should have stepped in and been, hey, with the luckies, Kmart leaving, that was a missed opportunity to get Target in there, because it's bringing people from Clayton, from Pleasant Hill and all that. So I want to make sure that we expand our tax base, our sales tax dollars, so that we can actually spend on more services that we want and help our public safety and our, improve our roads and our parks. And so we've got to make sure that whether it's giving them incentives, making sure we allocate money for our small businesses to make sure that they come back and that as well immigrants are able to, if they want to build a business, we're in the country of opportunity. But we've got to make sure that we provide those spaces and make sure that we give those incentives to the small business. And I'm willing to work with the business community as well, with the Chamber of Commerce on making sure the policies that we put forward help our small business community as well.
Thank you. Matthew?
There's a lot of building going on in Concord, and I know this personally. I went and tried to get permits, and there's no in-manning the permit station, and you have to put your, submit your plans, and it takes a three-week response. It used to be you'd get those plans that day, approved. COVID's over, we need to get back to work. There's a lot of building going on, a lot of people, little businesses need to get that taken care of right then, and right now, it's not going on. There's three-week responses for a question that could be answered immediately by someone staffed at the city of Concord. So we need to get back to work there and make it easy to do business in the city of Concord, invite people there, small businesses.
Eddie?
Once again, I'd like to remind us that it's not just talking now, but for the last four years, I've been on the Economic Development Committee. We have put away millions of dollars and directed them to our small businesses. This has been done again and again, and I'm the only candidate to speak to it and to adjust it. So thank you for, what are we doing here? I had a little speaker problem. Thank you. We are, have, we've just put in another program where we are putting up $30,000 as a match for small businesses to be able to use in their sales. We have 9,000 small businesses. The Monument area is the most concentrated area of entrepreneurial spirit, which we have supported repeatedly, and I look forward to more. But please remember that for the last four years, we have put millions of dollars, and the only candidate that has spoken to it and acted on it is myself. So thank you.
As a council member, what would be your three big priorities? And I would like to start with you.
Well, enhancing community service, like the quality of life, making data-driven decisions as well, and investing in our infrastructure is so important as well. I can mention earlier, Measure V brings $30 million. We invested $120 million, but we've got to keep investing in our neighborhoods now. The main arteries have been fixed or being fixed currently, but our neighborhoods are falling behind. And I've been knocking on doors, talking to my neighbors, talking to everyone in District 4, and they're like, my road, I have potholes, the sidewalks are, what's going on there? And as well, serving on the Commission for Parks Recreation and Open Space, there's a lot of deferred maintenance. People want good parks. Some of the tennis courts in Concord Community Park are, are not usable because the asphalt is not up to par. We've done a lot of deferred maintenance on them, and as well, making sure that we have a fully-staffed police department. I've been talking to some of the dispatchers, it's a huge turnover with the dispatchers, we want to make sure that we continue to hire dispatchers and provide the services they need, because it's a 24-hour-seven job, and they hear a lot as well, and I want to make sure that our Concord police, and they're doing a terrific job, an amazing job, that they continue to, continue to provide that. And instead of, you know, putting red light cameras, let's hire two more officers. I think that is a, a great way to spend our money instead of putting red light cameras. I do believe we, we can make all those three things in my first term as city council member.
Thank you.
What was the question again? Excuse me?
Don't worry. I was asking, what would be your three priorities if you become a council?
Priority? My first priority would be to try to do a real solution on homeless, because clearly what they've been doing does not work. They've stalled out. Clearly, someone has stalled out along the way. So that would be my number one priority. And then my second priority, I'd really like to see Concord, up by North Concord Bart, somehow build a sporting complex, second to none in the state, if not the country, for kids to go anywhere in the Bay Area they can get to by public transportation to keep our kids busy in a positive manner. But we have a real opportunity, because the infrastructure is there, to build a place where kids can go for a positive thing on weekends, play sports, and a learning center. And it's very personal to me, because I raised my kids, and I spent 10 years driving to Ripon, which is in the valley, to play teams from Pleasant Hill and Walnut Creek after we got there, and spent an hour and a half driving. And why Concord doesn't have something that helps the whole community, because it helps the kids, which in turn become the adults, sets a real positive way for everybody to go and would bring a lot of revenue into North Concord. So that's it.
Eddie?
The three biggest things are, yes, homeless. We have a plan in place, and we've already worked on 28% reduction. We've got $5.2 million, which we are allocating to continue the effort, and this is something that I have worked on personally for quite some time. Second, public safety. I'm very proud of the fact that I was able to get not only cameras on our police, but also the drones and the license plate readers. We are now recovering a stolen vehicle every week, and in fact, on last week, we actually recovered two stolen vehicles and arrested two car thieves. Furthermore, we also lead- vehicles and arrested two car thieves. Furthermore, we also lead the county in non-police response to mental crisis. We have the Miles Hall facility, which is located five blocks from my house, which I helped to bring to our community so that we can deal with mental crisis and take that relief off of our police office. Finally, on roads, I'd like to remind you that is the city council that's starting in 2018 that put the measure V, the tax measure on in 2020. And we only passed it by 500 votes out of 50,000. It took a lot of effort from the council and our people. Furthermore, in the last four years, we have worked on, the council has worked on a plan to redo the roads and we have a capital improvement plan for $120 million. I am the only candidate that stood up and argued for our county and for our district and got our main roads, Monument, Cowell, Treat, and Old Grove done. And it's being done now. We do have residential roads planned, especially areas like Ignatio Woods, which was done earlier. And we have other areas being done. You can check it in your capital plan. So again, proven leadership, these are the three things and we're working on it and I want to continue doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Miles.
My top three priorities are always safety. I've been knocking around the neighborhood lately and their main concern, especially speeding, the car break-ins, always car doors checking at night. And I believe there's not enough patrol. So we need to get, work with the police and give them support and strategies to be more efficient and to be around in our cities to make crime go down. Another priority of mine is to work with the homelessness to make sure they are taken care of via mental health or rehabilitation centers to get them back into the world so they could once strive again. My last responsibility or my last priority, sorry, is to be a responsible stewardship. There's too many tax dollars that the people of Concord have not known where their money went. Measure V is great, but also there's money that was lost in the naval weapons station. That needs to be accounted for and proven, you know, each dollar and penny is going to go somewhere. That's my priorities I would do.
Thank you. There's been a rise on the street vendors, especially in Monument Boulevard. What are you planning to do to make sure that they are safe and also they have a proper, you know, a permit to be operating the streets? We're going to start this with you, Matthew.
Well, first of all, they should have to get permits from the city to make sure they're up to the health code. Get their, the county does the inspections at Waterbird Way to make sure that they're actually up to the health code. They should have to do that. And then they should also have to ask the people where they're setting up shop in the parking lots that that's all right. Because I think it's not fair to the brick, people who rent from brick and mortar buildings and have a legitimate business when someone sets up their shop right across the street in a parking lot. So if they start paying the city license and getting the health codes, I think, and they get permission from the place they'd like to set up shop, I think that's fine. But first of all, you have to get the health codes and the city license and everything to pay your share of taxes that helps our city prosper. So as long as you can pay your share of the taxes and go by all the rules, I think more power to you.
Thank you. Eddie.
This is a fairly new and very active problem. And this is what I've done. We talked with the city manager and with the chief of police. We have conducted inspections and we have conducted evictions. We have shut down illegal restaurants as well as other operations. We brought in the county, got the county controls, the health inspection. They have shut down people. We now have two police officers working overtime in that area and going over each of these as we speak. This is a problem that was identified and as you, as your leader in this, we have taken action and we will continue to have action. One of the problems is that there is, every time you shut one down, another one comes up. So it's sort of like whack-a-mole. But we are doing the whacking and this is what's happening right now. We are also issuing letters to the various landlords who are in violation of their permits for operation by not having, if you're an auto repair place, you don't have a hot dog stand or a taco stand. These are the things that we're doing now. So it is something that's being worked on and it's an example of what you do as a city council member to act on the things that are needed at the time that they occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Miles.
I agree with Matthew Dashner for, you know, taxes have to be shared and paid for. Health is a major thing where if you don't know where the food's coming or if, you know, hands and sanitation is thing, that could be detrimental to citizens' health and everything. But I believe if with the right process, instead of police coming around shutting down places, we should have more inspectors coming around and seeing what qualifications they need and give them the resources to help grow their business because businesses is what helped Concord strive.
Thank you. Pablo.
You know, speaking to the business community, I've actually talked to the business community about this issue and this their number one priority, this reason, because let's say you are selling tacos and you have a brick and mortar place where you're selling tacos for eaters, Mexican food, and then you get a stand that sells the same thing, you're taking business away from that, from the brick and mortar. And so we got to make sure that we establish a policy. And by the way, this is stemming from a state law that passed that you could have vendors on the street. So but they pass on to if you, if the city wants to go further than that, they can. And in my opinion, I mean, you couldn't compete with two Mexican places if there was one outside of your front door. So we, it needs to be regulated. We need to get and make sure that they get licensed, that they make sure that they are up to code and as well, you're not getting sick when you're eating the food. So there are ways to regulate this and the business community has given the feedback and we got to make sure that we establish these policies that really help our current business who are actually paying rent, who are or own their brick and mortar place and they're paying insurance and all that. So we got to make sure that they are protected because at the end of the day, those sales tax dollars are coming back to the city.
Yeah, fair point. But at the same time, there's these populations that they need to work, they need to have their own business. And I know I asked before, you know, in terms of what would be your position to support small business, but how from your position can create an environment where instead of these street vendors coming to the streets, they are legalized and they're providing services, safety. I'm going to start with you, Eddie.
Well, we do have a consideration of creating a zone where these things could exist. It was done in Brentwood and it's still in progress, seeing how successful it is. One of the areas is how do we find a location where the vendors could collect and could operate, which also means we also have to provide sanitation and we have to provide water and a few other things. So this is under consideration. It is a what's called a second tier priority for the council. This was identified in March and April. We have internally talked to our city staff. They are investigating this. There are several other methods, but the priority will always be to protect our existing small businesses and make sure that our community is served well. We understand that there is a need for this. Obviously, there's a need because they're, they have customers. The question is, what is the best way to approach? And the issue there is we are studying it. We have identified it. We know what some other places are doing. And it is on our priority list, but it's not the top three, that's for sure.
Thank you. Miles.
It is a priority for businesses and for the small business to have a space, a safe space, where it doesn't feel like straight on competition. You don't want to be taken from the next man because you know, they're just working hard to feed their family. I believe there's plenty of space in Concord that can build an infrastructure or even use space that is already built to put them in. Kmart building, for example, is a great space. They have a kitchen in there with a hood. If you do it right, they could be its own food festival place in one building where it would have sanitation, it would have water, it would have everything you need under a roof. So even on the rainy days, they could still support their family.
Thank you. Pablo.
Yeah, no, I, going back to talking to, I think the small business community in the chamber don't oppose to this. I think they're just want to be regulated, figure out a zone or figure out a way that they're not competing with brick and mortar. So I do think creating a policy where they can actually do this vending is super important. And so I, again, I'm not opposed to this. I, we just need to find the best avenues to make sure that this happens legally and appropriately and with the safety regulations and everything above.
I believe if they're going to go forward with something like this, a mobile barbecue or taqueria, it should be, you have to get a license and you shouldn't be able to conduct your business within so many yards of another restaurant that serves the same food. So if I had a taqueria, let's say I couldn't, someone couldn't set up shop within 400 yards of my taqueria. If we did something like that and still let them have their places on the street, they can do that as long as they meet the health requirements, which you could have the same as a food truck. So you could keep the cost down for the city and the cost down for the vendor by letting them have a mobile spot. But you have to really make it clear when you get caught within an area so close to another restaurant, they would get a fine or something against their record. But keep the cost down. The place that they're talking to have a multiple, it's just, that's too far down the road right now. We need to make a solution now and then have a long-term plan. But the solution now, in my opinion, would be you can't open up shop right across the street from another taqueria. But if you're within 400 yards or at ample space, then you can open up your restaurant and have it where you have to get licensed. You have to pay taxes, but make it where those people can start up because there are people trying to start up a small business. They don't have a lot of revenue yet. So let's give people an opportunity to get a chance. Maybe they can open up their own brick and mortar someday. They're good. So.
Thank you. I, there's another topic that I want to talk and we have some time to talk about this, but it's education, right? And it's how you're planning to support elementary, middle school, high school education through the school in Concord, that they need support, they need budget, they need more presence of the city. So what's your take on education?
Well, my take on education, we just got to give them the resources of today's world. Technology is on the rise where, you know, some kids, some schools, they have laptops and stuff that are outdated. We need to give them the technology that would help them in the field today. I believe that, you know, college might not be for everyone, but trade schools and regular schools like woodshop and auto shop in high schools, they're not so longer around anymore. And those were key factors that helped people get into the next step to being just a regular shop mechanic. So if we could give them the sources and the places to learn and make it safe for them and educational, it would be great for them.
Thank you, Pablo.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I've been endorsed by some of the Montali Beano High School District Directors and as well of some of the colleges directors. And so it is super important. Although the city does not have jurisdiction, how they govern or anything, we can be advocates and supporters of our education system, along with the people who are elected for this office. And one of my biggest priorities, which I, when I talk about enhancing our community services, bringing a new library to the city of Concord. I've met a lot with the commissioners for the county who deal with the library, library commissioners, and as well with the community, and they want a new library. We have one of the oldest libraries here in Concord. And for such a big city, we should have a new library. And in front of the Concord Police Station, there's a great location. It's near public transportation, near all the districts of Concord. And I think that's how we can enhance because the library is not just a place where you go rent books. It's a place of communities and of community. It's a place where if you need internet, you can go get internet there. It's a place where you can also, if you need a quiet place because you're doing your PhD or you're, it's a place of also family. I'm a new dad. I have a 17 month old. And so I want to make sure that our schools are being supported and I want to make sure that I work along with all these directors who serve on educational, the educational system, that I listen to them and we can be partners on this because I also want my daughter to go to public, public schools. And it's super important. Thank you.
Once again, I need to ask the question again. All these answers go different directions.
No, we're talking about education. From your standpoint of view, what would you do to ensure that we improve the education in Concord, the elementary, middle school?
Okay. My kids all went to public school in Concord and my youngest is going currently in high school. There's room for improvement, but I think the teachers do a great job with what they're given. The infrastructure is pretty bad. We need to, you know, the sun will speak for Concord High, you know, they, they could do a lot there because we, we have a lot of kids and especially if the naval weapons station is going to get built out, we'll serve some of those children. So we need to put money into the school, the libraries, yeah, they need to get those in the school, everything back up to task. Overall, they're doing a good job. Mount Dalby School District's doing a pretty good job, but there's always room for improvement. And I actually, you know, I donate time back to Concord High. And I think what's the difference between an all right community and great community is when people give back to the community. So it starts at a local level with you volunteering, giving back, doing your little bits. And that's what helps the schools thrive. So as a Concordian, I would say to everybody, donate your time, do a little bit and it ends up being a lot. That's it.
Thank you. Eddie.
As a former president of the library and having been volunteer there for eight years, I'm very aware of the importance of a library to the education, which is why four months ago, I led a delegation as the mayor to Washington DC and met with both our federal senators asking for $4 million for exactly the expansion of our library. This is, we secured both of their supports. It's now hung up in the bureaucracy of the federal government, but we are aware of this. We have acted on it. I also suspect I'm the only one with a library card, which I've had for 40 years of living here in Concord. But with that, I would like to say that education is very important. One of the things we need is the development between the government and the school district, which is why 12 years ago, I formed the Youth and Education Standing Committee for the city council, which is still in effect. We have a quarterly or a yearly meeting with the school district. One of the best things that I enjoy most is when I go to the schools and I will run a session of what it's like to be in the schools in the city council. I'll bring them into the city council or I will go to their classes. All of this is the kind of things that I have done and shows the kind of leadership that I've done. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for today, candidates for being here to answer questions about big issues confronting constituents. Now, each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement and we're going to start with Matthew.
Once again, my name is Matthew Dashner. I'm running for District Four City Council and I'd really like to help clean up the homelessness in Concord with the real solutions, not just pushing them from one spot to another. And I think there's a real opportunity for Concord to really be the city it can be by building a great sports complex, learning center by North Concord Bart, the infrastructure's there, the money's there. And as far as libraries and stuff, there's enough companies and people in Concord that would donate money if we had a good plan to have a great library. We have very generous people in Concord and the outran surrounding communities. There's families that donate to the Concord Youth Center. And there are just a lot of great people in this area with the proper leadership. There's a lot of money. We can get, just make Concord be a diamond. Thank you.
Thank you. Pablo.
Citizens of Concord, again, my name is Pablo Venavente and I encourage you to visit my website to find out more at pablovenavente.com. You can also reach out to me at 925-338-1473. I'm accessible to you. I want to make sure that Concord, we really have good leaders in that city council and I want to represent you in the council. We want to make sure that we continue to enhance our community service and we got to make sure that our public safety is well funded and we continue to invest in our roads. Back in 2020, the whole reason why measure V was put on the ballot and I agreed to be on the ballot committee was because we didn't have any funding to fix our roads. And we were in dire need and you knew when you were coming from Walnut Creek on treating to Concord, that you were in Concord because it was pothole heaven. And so I did something about it. I just didn't cross my arms and waited to make a city council to make a decision on where to find funding for it. I put measure V in and as a result, it passed. We are reading our road targeting fix. It gives $2.4 million to our homeless strategic plan. It also helps with our public safety and I want to, and also helps with our parks recreation and open space. So I want to bring that leadership into council and I want to count on your support because it is so important to bring new change, a proven leadership that is actually, and I'm not even elected and I've already done so much for our city. And I want to bring that leadership into council and show you that as elected, I can even do even more. We together, we can do more. So thank you so much and please go and visit my website at pablovenavente.com and I look forward to earning your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Miles?
I'm Miles Burks and I'm not a career politician. My role is to be your voice, to make it very transparent and for the language to be understand for the common. I will work day and night to address all problems, big and small. I will work hard to continue to strive to put Concord on a good economic path to be great. I don't want I don't want Concord to turn into the next Richmond or the next Oakland. I hope to earn your vote and I hope I get your support. You could visit me at www.votemiles.com. And my website is, has my email and my number. And I promise you, if you vote for me, Miles Burks, I will go the extra miles for you.
Thank you. Eddie.
Again, this issue is strictly about proven leadership and who has already earned your support. I've shown over the last 12 years and the last 40 years of being here that I have been there for you, that I have led the fight. I have gotten things done. Just about everything that was brought up, I've already acted on and made better. We've got 28% reduction in homelessness. We've got 10% reduction in crime. We have $120 million of road repair going on. I am endorsed by both the police, the fire department, the unions, both the AFL-CIO, the building trades, as well as my colleagues on the council, which is something which also we have to talk about. I would also like to point out that on our commercial side, we are making great, great inroads and we are bringing in new businesses.